Okay, why don't we start the recording?
Yeah.
I have. So do you want to call it to order?
Yes, let me call the meeting to order at seven oh seven. Thank you all. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi. I'm going to just put off my remarks or not have any. I would like a vote to modify the agenda in that I would like to move eighty-one Main Street up in front of our old business so that we.
Yeah. Prioritize that.
So yeah, second. Okay. Then.
So move.
First, second. Okay, we have no minutes. Reports of the members, anyone have anything to say?
And that will probably talk about.
Whatever. Okay.
No, I will say it was encouraging that you had left, but you know, I said, I thank the board. I said, thank you for removing the time limit. I said, you know, you've gone from an eighty-six page document to a hundred and thirty behind closed doors. We can't catch up with you at three minute clips. Yeah, I appreciate you taking, you know, taking the time limit off because if you saw it was still on the board documents, it was still going to be a time limit until the time of the meeting. And then it was removed after meeting. So I thought that was a very good sign.
Yeah.
Okay, no court comment. All right then. Would you like to join us here?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is, as you all know.
Your Catherine Groom?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome. I'm Jack Goldstein.
Yes, I'm Daniels.
Matt Francisco.
And I'm Sue Maier.
And this is Karen Cerbert, who is the Board Secretary. We are talking here about an application for a change of use from retail to food service in eighty-one Main Street, which is the building just to the left of us here.
Next door.
The little porch on it that was the Knights of Columbus building.
But that's the building soul, right?
Yes, it did tell. Yeah. And this is a food service establishment that will serve tea and the food, but will not be making the food on site. So because it is the change of use, it, there is a requirement that I come to this board and would you like to take us through what changes you're planning to make?
Oh, okay. Almost like a summary of what you have here and the floor plan.
Okay.
And then your parking lot, basically.
Okay. It is that you want me to start from?
Let's just start from the beginning.
From the store now, it has all the petition. I think it used to be candy store, a, a level good store and a music repair something that I know. And they have a lot of petitions, okay? And for us to make a tea house and we have to remove those petitions, just a wall for the kitchen and out in the, the front will be all open. Okay, all open. And what we plan to do on the map here, when you go in there on the right hand side, we're going to have the pedestal. It is like a, a display, something different that with the light on it, people go and see is actually unique kind of dessert. Okay. I learned that from Japan. What I was saying, I was looking at it. What is it? I thought it's jewelry, but it was cookies.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, interesting. And then on this side, on the left hand side will be just benches for people to see it and look out the window. Okay, now on this side here, you walk up will be three table with a lot of plants. A lot of plants. And on the left hand side, we're going to have four sections made with the, the slack wood like that you see through that we can, this is solid. We just, we don't have the software to make the slack wood. The slack wood is something like the.
There was a picture of it with slack.
And now, they don't have the picture.
So it's just kind of like a fence.
Yeah, it's like two by four, two by four, and then two inches apart. It can see through.
Oh, okay.
All see through there. And, and then we have four section for people to, some of them with a different height. So that creates something different that people can walk up two step and some are three step like that. Okay, only four section. And right here on the left, on the left hand side, we also were going to have being that inside there is no window, we're going to put the, the, it's called the light box that have this blue sky on it. When it lights up, it look like outside that you're outside. Okay.
On the ceiling.
Yeah, on the ceiling. And, and then on the wall here, we're going to have a million fireplace. So after, like, like after the sundown, you can feel the, the movement of the fireplace. It is warm and relaxing. Yeah. Okay. We're just trying to create something different and for people to relax and enjoy sitting there, having tea and dessert.
Okay. Right? And you're not making any of the food.
We are not making anything. There's no kitchen there. Everything that is Japanese dessert, we're going to get it from Japan. And then we plan to have Italian and French that we're going to have the supplier in New York.
Got it.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
For sure.
There is, there is a chap.
Just the kitchen area with all the necessary stuff.
Stuff.
Yeah. This is going to be the, the, the counter. Counter. And then in the middle will be a glass display for dessert. Okay, it's something like that. Yeah, not exactly like that, but we just even the idea. Yeah.
All right, you can see it also from there.
The total square footage is eleven hundred something. Okay. And when, when we minus the, the two bedroom and the kitchen, I figure about nine hundred square feet, but maybe it's less. We'll just give it around four figures. Based on the requirement, it is every three seats for one space, parking space, which we don't have. So that I will have to apply for the parking areas.
Yeah.
I noticed in this computer drawing.
Yeah.
That the windows that are facing onto Main Street.
Yes.
Are different from the windows that currently exist. Or is that just a?
It should, which window?
These here.
That is a skinny window and there's a big window.
So the skinny window is already there?
It's already there.
So then, okay, there won't be any alterations to the outside of the building.
Nothing.
Okay. And what about the porch area? Will you be serving on the porch area?
Well, the porch area, I guess we might, we might have little two tables sitting there. Yeah. On, on the outside.
And signage? Will there be?
Signage. Probably will be right on top where the for sale sign is will be around it. Yeah, we have not get to that part yet because I don't know what's going on. So one step at a time.
Okay, okay. You will, I think, need to pay a visit to the Historic District Review Board, which has authority over making sure that signs are compatible. So you may want to schedule a, a, a talk with them.
Okay.
It's up to you, but.
Okay.
But exterior signage, we don't have any, normally have any say on exterior signage.
Okay, okay. I probably will follow, you know, what everybody is doing.
Okay.
If you look in the codes, you there, if you keep to a certain size, it's affixed to the glass, that, that does not need a permit from anybody. So there is a, there is a.
You don't need any permit.
No, no, no. It, it has to be quite small, right? And it's not coming, it's not standing off the building. So if you look in the code, the signage chapter, there, there are ways to just do a sign without having to go through historic review.
Like.
Okay. I don't know. Let's see flags. That whole by policy, remember?
Oh, no. Yeah, but no, I meant. Advertising.
I mean, it's projecting off the building. I mean, if it's signage, then yeah, I mean, it should be, you know, there's a, the, it, I forget what it is. Is it? Twenty, it's two square feet or something. It's, you, you can have a fairly decent sized sign. It's not protecting the building.
The glass window.
There's somebody on Main Street that has that. The smaller sign. I think everybody has bigger sign. How about the cross the street? There's a moon that didn't have any sign on their windows, but they have one on top of their door.
They probably.
Yeah.
I don't know.
The cheese shop.
Yeah, that's a very large sign.
The cheese shop has a large sign.
It says cheese. The big signs is.
The cheese is bait.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, whatever. There's a, if you stay below a certain size, square footage, right?
Right.
You can actually just get it if you're, if you're in a hurry and if you're trying to open your season or.
Okay.
By the way, the village clerk is there to help you maneuver through this whole process. So that if you have questions, for instance, about the Historic District Review Board, this whole area of Cold Spring is both a local historic district and a federal historic district. And so I wouldn't worry about it being a federal one. But there is a local Historic District Review Board that has some guidelines and Jeff, the village clerk, can help you, can introduce you to the chair of that. And I, I would suggest that.
Okay.
When you're ready.
Okay.
You know, that you have a sit down.
Take a long time because it's a story. But then to a pool.
Well, if you contact them soon enough and they need probably two, two weeks to get.
Two weeks, three weeks. Oh, that's fine. That's fine. That's fine. I haven't started anything.
Take months, but.
Okay.
But if you contact them early enough, they will put on their schedule.
Okay.
We'll discuss. They will tell you when. But usually you have to give them at least two weeks' time before they can schedule.
Before I submit the application.
Yeah. Otherwise, you know, if you come to me and say, can you see me tomorrow? They probably will not.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, but this, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think that the signage in this process needs to be linked.
No.
If this process, you know, goes through, you'll be able to start this work. And then at the same time.
With this.
Just make your decision about what you want to do with your sign.
Right.
First and then seek.
Right. That's right.
So, yeah.
Okay. So. Are there any, are there any questions from any of the board members? So you.
You, you're not touching the outside. So the buildings, it's not going to be made accessible, right?
Can it have accessible? Well, there is steps right now, right? So I don't know how you make it accessible, right? And it's the historic property. You cannot make any change.
So that's not, that's actually not the case here.
Yeah.
Certainly in the, in Boston, that would be the case, but not.
We're, we're less strict here, but as you're not making any changes to the experience.
Yeah. I think the, the future owner, my thinking of remove the little. Stair next to it.
The spiral staircase?
Yeah. I think he has planned to do that. Yeah, but that's.
But that's.
That's his problem. Yeah, I have nothing to do with it.
So what we're looking at is stairs that you should have one.
Okay, everyone. So if we may turn to the EAF. Please. And if there are any questions here. Please let me know.
EAF is this one here.
This appears to be completely filled out, which is good.
Because we have the floor, we have the floor plan already, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Right here.
It's a block plan, yes.
Okay, in terms of number eight B, Public Transportation Services, are you talking about the train?
The train, yeah, the train. This is right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We need parking waiver for a whole bunch.
Parking waiver is for single use.
Yeah, but if you change.
And there probably wasn't on the other one anyway to been in there so long. You get one grandfathered space on Main Street. So if you need, if it calculates a ten, you need to buy nine.
Is it, if, if that's changed use, if it's the original thing, then, then you can, you can do it. I think you can.
I actually, I actually don't agree with it.
No.
The bill, the code enforcement officer doesn't refer to those things. I, I think when the, when the parking, when the payment leave waiver, parking waiver is for a single use only, it seems to be that even if you put them on, even if it were, even if this built property, even this, you know, if this property were to end and then another one comes in to do a restaurant, the way I read the code, you're supposed to renew the parking waivers, right? There's the for single use, yeah, but they don't refer those to us. And it's been a, it's been a kind of disagreement for because it says right in the code, they're single use.
Um, I have a question about number twenty of this. And you have checked off, yes, that the site.
That is based on the, what you call that map? It was, it built up by self.
I wonder what it was.
Yeah, it was, what you call that map?
Yes.
EAF member.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it, it fill it in by self.
I don't know what that's referring to, but somehow we need to check that. I'm not. Okay, that will, we will need to check then. Okay. With that being open, I can, you, can I still sign this with a, I know I'm going to go through part two, but.
You can, if you want to just go through part two and then are you going to schedule a public hearing?
Yes.
This doesn't change use.
Yeah.
You could always, I think once that's clarified, then you could.
Okay.
Okay, clarify it at the time of the public hearing.
Okay, so let's go to part two. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? I would say no. Yes. Will it result in a change of use and intensity of use of land? I would say no. Impair the character or quality of the existing community? I don't believe so. Environmental characteristic that cause the, no. Will the proposed action result in adverse change? Existing level of traffic effect, existing any good structure from it? So I would say no. Increase use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunity? I, I take it that you have a program at work of using energy efficient light as well as.
Most of them are LED.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Are you going to change, well, in addition to the skylight?
The skylight is the LED light. Yeah, LED light.
But that's in addition to what existing lights? Are they LED already?
Right now, there is a lot of this type of lighting on the drop ceiling. And I think the one that we have is is with lower energy, using less energy with the newer one now. Yeah.
So you're going to still keep this kind of.
No, no, we don't, we don't. Yeah, we have a, like I said, most of them are LED. Yeah. I would say all them.
Okay.
And then for tea, you would just need hot water?
Hot water.
Milk.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. So for the, for heating of water and so on, what kind?
There will be a machine, just a, a water machine, a water machine.
So do you have a stove?
No stove. No stove.
Just refrigeration.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I think. I would say no.
That would be a no, yeah?
Yeah, I think so. Impair the character or quality of important historic architectural, I would say the likelihood is little for them. Or none. Result in adverse change to natural resources, the wetlands, no. Will the proposed action increase of potential erosion and flooding? No. And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? And I would say no.
I have a question there for the drainage. Do you use Chinese tea leaves or do you use tea bags or?
Tea bags.
Tea bags. Okay. All right. Because tea leaves, it may get into the drain, but tea bags.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I am going to check that this project will result in no significant adverse impacts. Okay.
I want to say, when we, what was it? We did eleven Main Street? There's something which I know is further down. I think that box also was checked automatically on the hazard side, but I don't remember why. I can go back and look at it.
Which question?
Number twenty.
The, yeah.
Site. That's. Yeah, the D C often, it pulls from their database. But it could be anything. It'd be like a fuel spill, right? Yeah. It was never a.
It wasn't a problem for, for number eleven. That's where they moved from this to.
Yes, I know, but they, and it wouldn't be within the four corners of this application anyway. I mean, it's, they're not doing anything.
Okay. I'm just going to hold off completing the environmental review until we can check on that. Yes, that number twenty, but I don't really foresee any significant problem that would stand in the way of our of our finding that no further environmental review is necessary. The next step in this process is that we must hold a public hearing on this application. And that involves your working with the village to get a list of addresses and the village can help you with that. And to notify those addresses that this application is under consideration. And before we leave tonight, before you leave tonight, we'll set a date for that public hearing. And we will prepare a, a public advertisement that goes into the papers in case anyone in the area of this project would like to comment on the application. And this is standard. Also, you will need to set up an escrow account with the village.
I did already.
You've done that? Okay, okay. So when would be the next regularly scheduled meeting where we could hold a public hearing?
Well, I think we'd have to go. We have on the eleventh, the Food Town Public Hearing, and we won't, we wouldn't have enough time to do the publishing.
Okay.
So we'd have to go to the twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth. So we would. Is everyone agreeable to setting the public hearing for our meeting on the twenty fifth of May?
May.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Basically, have a motion.
And can, so.
So.
So move second. Okay, all in favor? All right. So. The next step will in fact be the public hearing in a little over two weeks or so. And in the meantime, if you have, well, first of all, welcome to Cold Spring. It's a lovely idea. And.
I can openly test it.
Yeah, well, it's always, you know, there's always.
So long.
Yes. But it also protects you for the next shop that opens that has to go through the same.
It is then.
You know, so. And as you know, we're very protective of the character of the village because it's so rare. So bear with the.
Okay.
Okay. So Karen can give you my email and you feel free to ask me any questions.
Okay.
And if you work with Karen and Jeff on pulling together the addresses that have to be informed. And you will be responsible for showing that these notices were sent to people.
Okay.
Okay, so that is by using a return receipt form of mailing. And then we will have the public hearing on the twenty fifth. We, at that point, we can extend the public hearing that's very, if all of the information is available and if the project is not hardly impactful, it's unusual to extend the hearing. So we could approve the application in final on the twenty fifth.
Okay.
Okay. And it would be because we like to expedite or be expeditious in terms of helping businesses. We would strive to, to
Appreciate that.
To be able to do that. So. So if you have no questions of us, but do feel free to contact the village hall or contact me. And we will see you on the twenty fifth.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, so. You're there with me on this. I got an email from the mayor thanking us for our helpful comments last night. It was sending to us, reminding us that the village attorney and the consultants on this.
Hey, thank you. Good night.
Will be available to us during our, you know, the next month. So in terms of calendaring and organizing, you know, this next process, we have regularly scheduled meetings on the eleventh and on the twenty fifth. And I haven't actually received confirmation that they will keep the record open until the first of June, but I sure hope that they will. So. So. I think, and this is just my thinking of this, I think that we do need to concentrate on. Marathon site first. And so. We should probably anticipate dividing up that section. And that. At least. At the eleventh. Um we should be prepared, not with comments so much as with questions about the various sections. I would suggest that our public meeting should be a special meeting on the twenty third of May, which is a Tuesday. Are you hesitating?
Well, it's my birthday.
Consider it a celebration. Well, if 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 this becomes a problem, I will pay for your birthday dinner out.
No, no, no.
At some time in the future.
Yeah, don't, don't worry about it.
On the eleventh, are we gonna have um? John here or someone else?
We, I will try to have both John and um Ted, Ted. On the uh on the line or in person for all three meetings.
Okay.
I have no sense of whether or not Tom's review this chap, this this chapter.
He hadn't as of. When the draft was sent to us, the first one he had not, because it's because I got an email from him saying, I don't think I'm the best person.
That was my sense.
Yeah, to look at this because I haven't seen it yet. So it was one of.
Great defense.
Yeah, so and and honestly, I I.
A lot of love, so.
I'm not sure I I um found. Ted um very enlightening.
Lesson.
Yeah. So we need.
I do wanna, I I will write him and John, you remember, I had. I had been emailing him about the twenty, the paper streets and the and the lots, which everybody seems to forget. I understand they forget them. Um I don't forget. And um. I still don't have any answers to what, you know, Ted thinks that they have no standing because of nozzle, and I said, don't, you got that backwards. They do have standing because of nozzle, then because the merger clause was weak. So last night he gave a build out of.
I saw that.
Potential lots.
Yeah, I saw.
You weren't here when I spoke.
Not after that.
There is, in the supplemental, in the supplemental items on lot size. Oddly enough, out of the nozzleman lawsuit. The village that because it was going to be subdivided and become dense, the village kind of, you know, rose up and said, no, 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 no. Right, history has a way of repeating itself. What Mayor Phillips did at the time was put in um. In in chapter one thirty four, the supplemental restrictions that. Regardless of whatever use you are using, you must use the minimum dimensions of the existing zoning, right? So what that means is one acre lots at Marathon. The the same thing happened on Butterfield, where but the front page of the newspaper said, you know, you don't want this, I'm gonna put twenty three houses there. Called it Paul Glero, and I said, your lawyer's as bad as mine, didn't read to the end of the chapter, you can put four, right? So I said, it's not twenty three. So Ted did the same thing. I think he did it by seventy five hundred square foot lots. What I don't know. Is whether or not he's taking the twenty three that exists. Plus dividing the rest by seventy five hundred square feet, I don't know. So he needs to clarify that. Another thing we need to stop doing, weaving the village, not me, is stop saying Home Depot, right? This is, you know, he keeps saying, you know, this code will block a Home Depot. He has now said that twice. He should first look in the code and see that we have a formula business restriction.
Yeah.
Right, um you know, and if you're gonna do fear mongering, make sure, you know, that it that it complies with the code, you know. And if you're not gonna follow the code, then say Walmart, because that's much scarier, right? To Main Street, you know, but nevertheless, we have a formula business restriction. It would be helpful to not, you know.
Formula business.
Formula business restrictions.
Oh.
Change, change, yeah, I was on the board when we did that. Well, no, I was on the board when we started. That's why.
That's why, that's, that came in before.
Because it used to be that you, there weren't, they always went by trip counts, right? And we didn't have enough trip counts, but then Dunkin' Donuts was one of the first to adopt that, where, no, let's pay lower rent, smaller.
Yeah.
And fewer trip counts.
Okay.
Right, and so the village responded very quickly, and so we, the next board. Right after ours finished it, yeah, so.
Okay, getting back to this, what I would like is, once we have divided up the section amongst the five of us. I think that we should come to the eleventh, prepared with specific questions. And certainly, I think that the lawyers ought to be answering the questions about the nozzleman decision and not Ted, but anyway. Um come to it with specific questions that they have to answer. And if we can get these questions to them beforehand, that would be great. But nevertheless, I think that meeting ought to be devoted to. Specific questions about the sections.
Okay, and it's all, we're starting with one thirty four.
Yeah.
Okay.
But twelve, you're still talking about, you're still talking about just the marathon piece.
Yes.
Oh, just the marathon piece within that, oh, okay.
Okay, I I honestly think that that's the most important, and I'm not sure how much. We're gonna be able to do if if they cease to chase the twenty thousand dollars, then.
What's the deadline on the twenty thousand dollars?
June thirtieth.
End of June, yeah.
But it's not, but that's the, uh there's a lot between the approval and. Uh June thirtieth that they would have to do in order to access that money and show various.
Okay.
You know, so if that is the, and I'll I'll write this up and send it to you all as a memo, okay, so.
It would also be, I I don't, you know, without John's opinion, you would think. That as you went, you know, section by section, you would, you would be taking it to the village attorney to, you know, for risk analysis and for.
Yes.
Marie's got four or five pages of it, you know, referring, you know, to things that aren't there anymore. Or things that have changed.
Well, she went, she was going through the list, and she, they said, send it to us, don't read it.
Yeah, so. You know, this whole idea of forms based simplicity may go right out the window when it refers to something that isn't there. Because that's a real legal jeopardy, right? You can't, you you can't, you, you know, yeah, now you, you know. The mayor keeps saying, oh, we can't really read the code, you can't, well, you can follow it, it sells you where to go. If if this form space is very simple and has pictures and everything, but directs you to R one, which is gone, or directs you to B four A, which is no longer there. You come to a screeching hall, you throw the whole thing, you saw look on John's face, you know, what happens if it doesn't agree? He's just like, oh, we wanted to agree. You know, so it's just like, that's, anyway, so it needs to be gone through from, you know, from beginning to end. To make sure that it's not making bad references, bad judgments, bad, you know, bad links, that.
I, I do.
That's a big job.
I know it is.
I'll bet Marie's already done it though.
We'll ask her.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Marie gonna send the list, she said she's gonna send it to the village, will she send it to Jack?
Uh, I can get it.
Yeah. Um so the eleventh, we have a.
Questions.
Question and answer, well, an answer session from the consultant, the attorney. Between the eleventh and the twenty third, we take those answers. Um and integrate them into our analysis of the whole. On the twenty third, I think we need to, that would be our public session, and we would need to. Step by step, go through. That section.
Okay.
In some detail.
With the people here.
With the public here. And.
So you would have on May eleventh, it's it's public, because we have the hearing as well. May twenty third is a public, and then you would have your regular five twenty five meeting.
That's correct, because um on the twenty fifth, when we meet. That's when we're going to have to decide what our final comments are gonna be. Based upon feedback from the public and what we've learned from the attorneys. Okay, and I don't think we're gonna be able to do that in one night. On the twenty fifth, but. But I think that ought to be the focus, so that we can be prepared to have. Our comments to the extent that we can do it. Uh ready for the village if they hold to June first.
Okay.
There were comments last night from the um public. Uh I think it's Sue from uh Ferris Street.
Sue Pio.
Yeah, and um. She, I think she, basically, she said, the zoning. Should follow the land instead of follow people. And she said, why do we uh look at the old things and then follow the old things? Basically, her comment is, we should look at the current situation and 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 see what the code will would do. Instead of saying, uh well, this is a, this is already existed, so therefore we have to do something for the existing thing. She said, well, it's there, but can we do something new away from the old bag? And then the the gentleman there, who used to be the zoning chairman, said. You cannot put a five pound stuff into a two pound bag. So therefore, yeah, so so therefore, there there are different ways of of thinking. Um I think right now. As a board, uh we, the planning board, seems to be trapped in something that we. We have to do this way, or we have to approve or disapprove.
Um, well, to a certain extent, we are.
Um so there there was somebody else commenting to say, is there any other way? And and then the.
I'm not, what do you mean, any, you mean like a a completely different rewrite or?
No, no, not I, I, you know, is is there not rewrite? Um is there another? Thing to do with Marathon, I think that's probably, I I think that's that's the the question, instead of saying developing residential and so on. Uh can we do something else? I I I I take that as as the the.
Well, I mean, look, if if the meetings were to have happened in a public forum, all that feedback would have been in real time, right?
Yeah.
The last, you know, public. You know, if it was when they were going to to do a development, right? And that's what the nozzleman lawsuits came out of. You know, and so the the code was unchanged, obviously, to limit the density, right, to restrict the density and that and greatly. Right, as opposed to, you know, quarter acre lots, one acre lots. Right, you know, so the code that is in place actually ensures the least density. Um and it's interesting, Aaron Frymarket said, you know, can, you know, can the village board just kind of rezone your property?
Yes.
That's what they're doing, you know, should they, how should they do it, you know, is it the right thing, is there a legal defense, you know? If it's challenged, right, you know, like Bill Pugh was, you know, like, I don't, you know, you're taking value, right, you know, and um and. Look, if you, if you need to do that, you need to have a defense, right, when the, you know, when the article seventy eight comes, they will come. There won't even just be one. Right, you know, so the question will be, why did, you know, Mr. Pugh's property, for example, why did that need to change from R three to R L? Why? I don't know what, I don't know what argument the village would have, right?
I'm also concerned that we not get caught up in that, so part, I mean, of the challenges. So part of this process has got to be a recognition all the way through. That we are in fact reacting to a process.
Yeah.
That was inadequate, and I still, even though I softened the language of that statement. If I want to listen to everyone.
I still. Clara, I I I almost replied, so you wanna watch dog that doesn't bark?
Yeah, well, that would. Anyway, anyway.
Not in my own style, I.
I know, I know, but just as soon you didn't do that.
And I wouldn't.
You didn't, so I appreciate your exercise, some restraint.
I thought that exchange is gonna go on forever.
So, um but it doesn't mean that I don't feel very strongly about.
Right.
What, I think, look, it is, I get her point. About tempering the message so it's productive, but. Look, when you know who you're dealing with, you you know, there's, it also is important that they understand that you know who you're dealing with.
And I think the.
Right, I think the. Don't, then they believe that, you know, they're, you know, that that you're, you're negotiating from a very different, you know, a very different point. If you're not really being very clear about where you're coming from and where you believe they're coming from.
Well, I agree, I agree. I think she understands where I'm.
Last night was a good indication that Mary did understand, because that was a completely different meeting.
Yeah. Um, so um. So all I'm saying is that our final comments. Will have a, if for want of a better term, a preamble. Uh in which we describe the conditions under which we have been.
Pete, get down. Yeah, just that we're we, it's a response to it, you know, to to their recommendation.
That's right, that's exactly right, so um.
Okay.
Okay.
It sounds good.
Okay, so um if you all will take a look, a- as will I, and and I'll speak with Clara. A look at. The marathon portion. And. Or if if you're uncomfortable doing the marathon portion.
Well, no, I I will do it, but but when we look at, you know, I I have this, I, you can see I have question marks and different things. And also I looked at this version that we got uh from the red line. Uh on the, you know, from the village that sent by, there were. Uh pieces that seem to be different or missing in this thing. I asked Jeff, is it the same? He said it's the same, uh but I will look, however, when we look at, because these are um. Very detailed things, like how big this thing should be, you know, the the two doors, the four doors, and so on, so forth. For for those, I I don't know if we should spend a lot of time uh looking at those things.
I think we should spend a lot of time looking at everything, so if you have these questions. Put them down and make them part of the conversation. We can always organize things however we like. But we need to begin to go through this with a fine tooth comb.
Okay, well, I'm I'm going through, yeah, I'm going through a a lot of the things, the questions, you can see all these comments and stuff. Uh took forever, but but I'm trying to, so that's why I have the question, can we just concentrate on this article here? Instead of the whole thing, because it's really this thick.
Well, I, as I say, I don't want to bite off more than we can chew, and I don't want this thing also to. You know, I don't want it to be an unmanageable burden on this committee.
We'll get overtime, right?
Yeah, of course we. Um. And so I think let's focus in as, to begin with at least, on the. Essentials of the marathon.
Yes.
Yeah, I.
And I unfortunately, you can't really carve it up, because, you know, you know, because you need to understand it as a, as a, as a.
Okay.
Structure, because, okay, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
And questions about, you know, the the statement keeps being made that it's accessible, right, you know, is it accessible? If we can't figure it out, I'm not so sure that's accessible, and I can't quite figure out pieces of it.
Okay.
Right, you know, you you know, there's the, Michael Reese started to touch on it last night, is open space contiguous, right? Or, you know, thirty percent has to be open space, now it can't be held in private title, right? But it has to be open, but it could be tiny little pocket parks.
Yeah.
On every corner.
Well, and also, if you read the language carefully, it says it will be available at least. To the residents of the development. There's no guarantee that the public at large will have access to any of it.
That's right, no, and nor, and in some agreed, and in some ways maybe you don't want it, right, because then you gotta maintain it, and you have to ensure it. Right, you know, and it's, and I don't have any sense of the safety of that site, you know.
Well, that's another problem.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't, I I'm not really comfortable with the village kind of wading into that water and saying it's ready to develop. And the, you know, the comp plan and us using the comp plan, the strongest, like, one of the strengths, one of the things is the comp plan, there are a couple of things related to this, which are. They, you know, to get that thing passed, they watered the whole. they, you know, to get that thing passed, they watered the whole thing down just to consider, which means nothing. Right, but the two there were, you know, to ensure that the site's reme- fully remediated. Well, they haven't been able to do that today. So what is that, you know?
Well, that's what I put in the comments was, um, basically, the, what was the existing conditions and the plans were consistent with that chapter.
And I think also too, what is, what also kind of feels like, you know, a red herring, but this, this hotchol stuff, I mean, it, it, that stuff is not going to be defensible. You can't just keep building, and you can't just keep making housing, and you can't always make affordable housing. Um, you know, so I don't, I don't think that should really be driving the bus as to why we're doing what we're doing, and when we talk about all this money being available to us, not us, the developer. Right, you know, so I mean, it's, it's, we're really kind of mixing the mess, it's almost like we are too close.
And yesterday from the, from the audience and also online, I, I couldn't tell uh, from online, who's who, but here, at least the people present, there was nobody from Constitution, it's all.
I, I don't, I don't know what's going on with that, because they oh, Constitution, oh, I thought you meant Forge Gate.
No, 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 Constitution.
Forge Gate is what's really surprising me, because.
Yeah, and then, then Forge Gate, of course.
The mayor's looked into, I'm not sure why we're doing this, why we're doing it at taxpayer expense, but it's looked into whether or not Forge Gate is a street, right? Or whether it's a private road. Um, I don't think you would need that expense to the developer, but, um, yeah, and so those folks, their lives will definitely change, right? Because now.
But they're not, they, they will fight using that street as a thoroughfare. They've made it clear what they think they.
Right, but you know, to keep a private street, you gotta close it at least one day a year. That's what Rockefeller Center does, yeah, they have it, and they've already lost it. Right, so we need to, you need to get a legal opinion, that's why when you go to Rock Center every so often.
Oh, no, I know, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, yeah, Chubert Alley.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so I mean, I think that, that's, those are, anyway, I think you gotta look at it in its entirety.
Okay, we'll concentrate on these things.
And also to consider to that, you know, these assumptions that are being made, that it's all walkable, right? I don't understand how you make safe pedestrian thoroughfares up to, up to Foodtown.
Exactly, hard to walk. Not only that, but you know, the whole.
Wall Street is way too narrow.
Mm-hmm.
To let sidewalks, if God help you, if you try to walk up that without a sidewalk.
Right.
Right, you know, so there is the parcel at the end that the village owns, that used to be the, uh, that used to be our, uh, compost heap. That actually goes from, like, goes, yeah, up to Benedict, yeah. But you have to, I, that's why I had said in my write-up, that what we're doing to the two greatest challenges here is nothing, we're just restating them. Ensure, act, you know, good traffic access. Yeah, and ensure good pedestrian access, and ensure it's perfectly clean, and what? It seems to be, you know, and we're, trustee Bozey last night was like, no, no, this isn't happening, we're just, we're just making it possible. Well, when you make something possible for a developer, they will, they will certainly, they will certainly use what you make possible, and will make arguments as to why it will be done.
That's the.
So I mean, the point is.
No, and, and another thing.
Well, well, she, well, I think that's just a way to say, don't freak out, right? And I get it, right, you know, to say that it's not necessarily going to be fifty-two, it's not necessarily going to be, but I will tell you that a developer will maximize their dollars always, always, yeah. So it, it's, you know, if you know what you have with I one, right? You know, then they, obviously, the safest thing for village ever to do from a risk perspective, and especially if you can correctly calculate the buildup, this one is not correct. Then you know what your, what your maximum impact is, right?
So, so one major thing we should, um, um, ask is the, you know, the calculation. Um, yesterday, somebody actually asked, how do you calculate that? But Ted, um, came back with the answer based on what, I couldn't hear it clearly, but there was a table of some sort.
Yeah, you, yeah, you should look at that table, because that's, that's very important, because what that leads to is then the fiscal impact.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and so you look at that, but you know, I mean, I don't know, I mean, you, also, there's, you know, twenty-five hundred parking spaces, that includes Al Days, that turned up, we're not allowed to park at Al Day. A metro, I, you can't count those, this is, it's, you know, it's kind, it's, whether or not it's intentional, just it, it creates, it paints a picture that isn't real. Right, it makes the picture better, right? Which is what a developer would always do, and somebody who wants a code change and goes through it.
What did, um, Carney say?
About what? Any, about what he all, he, he, it's funny, because Aaron was like, I don't know the, you know, I was like, I don't know the owner, and he's sitting right behind him.
Yeah.
Um, and, and all he said was, somebody, a woman from Stone Street, Stone Street.
Uh.
Said that she, um, you know.
She wanted to, uh, announce her.
She, um, she just said, you know, would you give us your concept in place?
Yeah.
What he said is, this is the zoning hearing, this is not.
Yeah, and then, but he, but he was very diplomatic, I think, he said, we don't have any plan we want to see. He said, as a developer, uh, I would like to do certain things, of course, but he said, as a villager, I would like to see the, you know, the.
Well, exactly.
It was very diplomatic.
The full statement was, I one is easier for me.
Yeah.
Right? But he understands that, you know, that the village wants certain things, the village being, I, I guess, the committee, because, you know, it's not, it's not the village. Right, so the committee, and which he perceives to be the village, right? At least, at least for today, or last night, um, is, you know, wants this, you know, big dense, you know, um, village within a village. I don't, I, 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 I've been doing.
That's a question that I think we ask at the, at the twenty-third meeting.
Okay.
I mean, we, I think we need to ask the question about, is this the right concept?
Yeah, well.
Also, too, I think what needs to be understood too, is that, you know, when you talk about things about full remediation and access, and you know, and how do you get to Foodtown, right? You know, but you want everybody walking, because they can't have cars.
And mentioned about, uh, doctors and so on, said, oh, there's, you know, so much air pollution, people have to drive to the hospital. If we have one in, in there that people can walk, how many could walk there? I mean, seriously.
There is no safe pedestrian, you would have to go to Main Street.
And, and also, yeah, if, if you think about it, how many people actually came on foot last night to, to attend the.
Not me.
Seriously, this, this is a, uh, say what Carney said.
This is.
Finishing up.
This is, this is America.
I have a, um, I have a, I have a note here. Uh, Mr. Carney said, um, industrial works better for us.
Yeah.
As a developer, why go through the whole exercise? As a villager, it makes sense for the zoning. We have not a plan yet.
Right, Mr. Carney is very nice, and as a developer, there are some, there's some of the nicest, but a developer will always maximize their profit. A developer will always use the code to their benefit, right? Um, you know, the mayor says that, you know, they're all eating missteps at Butterfield. Butterfield was, was a different project. Um, and yes, we did look at the details first. The mayor should know, she was on the H D R B doing the details first. Right, so I mean, it, yeah, for Butterfield.
Okay.
Basically, what it's being.
There was a lot of, like, water under the bridge at Butterfield.
Well.
My, my exposure.
Which she says, this is, this, in, in many ways, she said it many times about it being a reaction to how Butterfield went. First of all, you that what happened with Butterfield was really at the planning board. Right, and you know, whether or not you, you know, anyway.
Wait, but Butterfield was the, the way that, it, it's a different scenario, I guess, because, I guess, I guess, my understanding of her statement was that there was a lot in the code that, that didn't serve the development of Butterfield um, as the planning board applied it, that, right?
Planning board had authority to do it, if look, if, if by chance, your planning board is taken over by a political operative, right? That has an agenda, and a planning board can go ahead, what? I, I should know, I introduced the local law for Butterfield.
Okay.
From the trustee, we sent it over to the planning board. Our direction to the planning board was, listen to the people and make any changes you want. What Barney Malloy did, which was very clever, is to say, oh, no, the trustees have already approved this plan.
Oh, okay.
Therefore, we can't change the plan. We all wanted the plan to be less dense, everybody. Planning board members came to me and said, you know, you did this, you are doing this, your job is to, so the argument that was made, and I was also the liaison to the planning board. Right, and I said, no, 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 we did not approve the concept plan. We sent it over to you for comment.
Which is what our function is.
Right, and to, and to reduce, and the input is to reduce the density, not a single thing was reduced. Right, so the developer was able to maximize their profit, um, you know, and look, and Barney, you know, and then it was passed, and Barney left the village. Right, so, you know, and he's been a Republican fixer for, you know? And so he came in, he went out, maybe that isn't what happened, but that's what I saw, but it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
That, that weakness still exists, right? You know, we don't have Jack's, we don't have Jack's loyalty. But you do need another, you know, three more, two or three more messages, exactly, he's, he's the plan. All right, let me.
But if there's anything I can do.
Well, let me.
Yeah.
Let me fill you in, okay? Um, the schedule here is for all of us to look at the marathon portion of it, because we're gonna concentrate first.
Not, not divided.
We're going to.
Everybody.
Yeah, we're going to, uh, gather some very specific questions for our meeting on the eleventh, where uh, John First and Ted Fink will be available to answer those specific questions. I don't want any history, or, you know, um, or any editorial items. Content, then we're gonna schedule a special meeting on the twenty-third of May, which is a Tuesday, and Karen's birthday, um, and.
The taxes, really?
That I've just.
That's not, is there any other?
Not the first one.
Jack will take.
We're gonna, we're gonna, um, that will be the meeting where the public is invited in, and we will go through that section i- in a very organized way, and let them ask, ask questions.
Based on the feedback that we all discussed on May first. There was.
Eleven, that's correct, and leading up to the twenty-third. Then we're gonna convene again on the May twenty-fifth, which is our regularly scheduled meeting, and try and begin the development of our formal comments, okay? With the idea of getting them to the village by June first.
Okay, so the eleventh, we have Foodtown.
Uh.
Yes, but I don't anticipate, there's public hearings, there's things like that, they don't take any more time than a regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I really, I, I, but, and we don't have any choice.
Right.
So, um, and I am, I will try to uh, zoom in on the eleventh. I will have to zoom in on the eleventh, I guess, I'm gonna be away from the tenth to the sixteenth.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we'll need a form of bodies here for that meeting, okay?
Yep, I'll be here.
Okay, and I'll, I'll zoom in on it, um. Okay, so that's the general strategy.
Thank you.
Okay?
Sorry, man.
Uh, it's okay, okay, so, um, I would like to go if we can. If it's not shutting anybody down.
No, that's no problem.
Okay, um, so no public comment, no board business, could I have a motion to return, please?
Motion to return. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Okay, this is what we did, this is what we did, of course. It's for the shop.
Oh, yeah. It's been a lot with the photos and stuff. And the school year, so, um, okay, so did they present? No. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll wash it up.
The public hearing is set for the twenty fifth
of May.
Okay. Yeah.
Is this an extra copy for?
Yep.
Okay, and I'm gonna be reaching out to all of you over the next, you know, whatever.
In terms of getting our comments, you just in the next one here, so, yeah.
But you don't have to wait to get them all, okay, because the collation of things is, is, it's really.